Barkle.
Here.
Loest.
Here.
Kettering.
Don, are you there?
Don?
Can you hear me?
Uh, no, can't hear you. Now I can hear you. Um, they're asking if you're present.
Yes, I'm present.
All right, thank you.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Here.
Weiss.
Here.
Clark.
Here remotely.
All right, everybody's present. Um, got a chance to go over the minutes from previous meeting unless there's any changes, I need a motion to approve the minutes.
Make a motion.
Second, Loest.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carried. Is there any items to be added to this agenda or any changes to the agenda?
Yeah, we're gonna take out the first two Platts, the Stoudemire and Zeeb.
All right, so we're eliminating the Stoudemire Platt and Zeeb Platt.
Correct.
On the agenda. Anything else anybody wants to add? All right, then I need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Uh, Loest?
Second.
Michael.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. All right, conflict of interest declarations, we can start with Kathy.
None.
Nelson, none.
Barkle, none.
Loest, none.
Michael, none.
Kettering, none.
Dan?
Bark, none.
All right. No conflict of interest. We have a few minutes before the 7:05 um, agenda item. We could move up Platt if you think we want...
Let's do the the Copley Platt.
Diaz, we're going to talk to him?
Oh, Diaz, that's right, I'm sorry. There was one at the beginning, Diaz. Yeah, the Diaz Platt is in ETJ. They just divided two lots. One lot into two, excuse me? It's this parcel and they just divided it in half. City's already signed off on it. So it's a formality for us. That's the new plan.
So since it's in ETJ, we don't have to make sure it conforms to any of the zoning districts?
When they send it to us, we tell them as long as the city's okay with it. And the city's already reviewed it and signed it, so they would... Yeah, we still need approval from us.
Move approval, Loest.
Second, Nelson.
All right, roll call vote when you're ready, Bill.
Barkle.
Yes.
Loest.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
All right, motion carried.
Should we just wait? Less than a minute?
Yeah, we should just wait for the rest of the Platts. All right, so 7:05, so we can go to the first agenda item. Uh, the Wagner variance applicant is requesting a variance to the front setback in a moderate density residential district. Applicant is requesting a variance 15 feet to the front property line to build a new house and garage. Said property is legally described as Lot 16A Marina Dela State West subdivision, section eight. Uh, township 93 North, range 56 West of the 5th PM, Yankton County, South Dakota, as per Platt recorded in book S20, page 43.
So this is the lot that they own. Um, this is 435th. For reference, here's the three condos down here. This is Catherine Way and they're right at the end of it. This is a big time, big time stream is for beacon. It shows they have a flat spot here and then everything drops off significantly. So what they're asking is a 15-foot variance from their frontage so they can be away from this drop-off. I believe they have to put a 12-foot footing if they have to go back 30 feet. So they're asking to go to 15 feet for the front setback. And there's some other pictures in your packet too, but I think this one shows the terrain the best.
What, what's the current setback?
30 feet.
30 and they want 15.
Correct.
Or need 15.
Correct.
Yep. It still meets all the other setbacks on the other two sides?
Yes.
Bill, is the access to that lot, is that in this little corner here?
Yep, Catherine Way, they're the end of the road.
So would that be considered their frontage then?
This, this one right here. This is Catherine Way and it ends...
Right, yeah, but their frontage is that, just that narrow... Is that what we're measuring off?
Yes. 10 foot off the side, 30 feet off of this. And their house, if I understand their plans, they want to build a house here and then the garage over here. And if they go 30 feet back, it's right here at the edge of the drop-off. So that's why they're asking, the garage will be turned a little bit like this. It'd be 15 feet.
I'm, I'm confused on the 10 foot. That is shown on that photocopy of that plot.
That 10 foot's the side yard?
Right, I see the side yard, but I'm, I'm confused on the 30, 15, and 10.
So are you referring to this one? The site plan?
Well, I, I'm looking at the photocopy of the plot where the house is uh, overlaid on the boundary.
Okay, I believe you're talking about this one. So what they had done is they had the surveyor come out and mark everything. And this shows, I believe, this is the 10-foot setback on the side. This is if they were to meet the 30-foot setback. Is that correct? They want to turn the garage so it angles this way.
Yeah, come into that 15.
And come into that.
And into that 30 foot.
Yeah.
So the corner of the, the garage is in that boundary line?
And that floating in the air.
Yeah. Well, I, I think you, your contractor said you'd have to put at least a 12-foot footing to secure it. Hope we're talking about the same one, Dan?
Well, it's, it's uh, in red and it's a 10 foot and I can't tell if that is a side yard. If it's a side yard and we talked about that being a 30-foot setback, but they need 15, the math doesn't add in my mind.
Oh, I see. So the 10-foot setback is the side. And that's to the side of the garage.
Right.
The, the line that goes through that is the 30-foot setback. Is that correct?
The, the line where you have your cursor now, that's the line of where the, before it really drops off.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So they would stay 10 feet away from the side, they just want to swing the garage to the south. 15 foot closer to the frontage.
So it's gonna be that same shape of house, you're just gonna slide the whole thing closer to the property line?
Yeah, the garage would slide closer in, or in that 15 foot.
So the house portion would stay the same. Just the garage goes forward.
Yeah.
So the lot that's next door to it, directly to the east, does that one also access that road right there or not?
They would be off the starboard.
They can access that Catherine Way in the same corner?
Um, they could. I guess it all depends on where they want their entrance at.
This house couldn't access that other portside lane?
I suppose they could, but it'd be pretty steep drive up to their house.
There's a lot of steep driveways right there. Okay, does anybody else have any questions for Bill? All right, thanks, Bill. Um, applicants here, would you like to add anything Bill didn't say or have anything else? Anybody have any questions for them? Right, I guess if there is none, I would open up to any other public comment if anybody wishes to comment on this specific uh, variance request. Seeing none, I'll close public comment on this topic. Um, board discussion?
Are all the neighbors fit with the adjustment? Assuming they are.
Well, I had one that came in and he was gonna protest it, but only because he doesn't want anything built there. Cause his, he's afraid it'll block his view. And I explained, well, that they could build no matter what. And then he said he was okay with it. So...
Yeah, my, my concern would be, you know, a fence is one thing, but a house, you're not gonna move. Once it's there, it's there.
So according to our ordinance. Variance. A variance is a relaxation of the terms of the zoning ordinance where such a variance will not be contrary to the public interest. And where owing to conditions peculiar, peculiar to the property and not the result of the actions of the applicant. A literal enforcement of the ordinance would result in unnecessary and undue hardship. And it goes on to say, we can get variances for the size of a structure or size of yards and open spaces. And the rest of it really doesn't apply. And then Bill handed out the list of things that we need to go through before we make any determination if this merits a variance. And according to, I went through some Supreme Court rulings on variances and they have the two-pronged approach, which is, which is outlined in our variance definition. One is it can't be contrary to the public interest and there need to be the special conditions um, on the property that we have to outline. And see if they merit a true variance. So 1B, um, I guess we should do 1A. Do you want me to walk through these, Chris, or do you want to walk through these?
You can go ahead.
So 1A, the strict application of the ordinance would produce undue hardship. So the applicant is essentially requesting a variance and setbacks from 30 feet to 15 on the front property line. So we have to decide what is an undue hardship. And 1B says such hardship is not shared generally by other properties in the same zoning district and the same vicinity. So when you look at a lot of properties out in this area, people build here because there's hills. And I would bet almost every one of those lots, I shouldn't say every, at least half have a hillside. And they're all oddly shaped. Because the roads are all built wherever we can get a lot that looks attractive to build a home on. So you can see water or some type of view. So is this a unique attribute to this lot? And I struggle with that.
I have a, a question just to get a little clarification. I'm not sure about this, but... Bill, is this, is this where the access is gonna be to the road off of that property?
No, they're coming off of the south and...
Yeah, I'm confused about that.
Yeah, right here.
So then, is this is...
This is where they're building house.
This is where they're building, but this is their access.
That's where the 30 foot has to be.
So that would be their front yard right there.
Their front yard, yep.
Even though it's...
Even though it's small.
Really narrow.
Yeah, so this, these would be their sides.
Right.
And then those would be backs.
So it's just basically in this area that's being built there?
Yes.
So those are the first two. When you move to 1C, you have the authorization of such variance will not be of substantial detriment to adjacent property. And the character of the district will not be changed by the grant of the variance.
That's where I questioned the lot right next door to it. If you're gonna move up on that, if they wanted access off the same corner there, you might be imposing on that.
Good. So D, the granting of such variance is based upon reasons of demonstrable and exceptional hardship as distinguished from variations for purposes of convenience, profit, and caprice. So in that case, would building a 12-foot footing be a hardship? So that is the first section. The second, no variance shall be recommended for approval unless the planning commission finds the condition or situation of the property concerning or the intended use of the property concerned, or the intended use of the property is not of so general or recurring a nature as to make reasonably practicable the form, formulation of a general record, regulation to be adopted as an amendment to this ordinance. So again, that really focuses on is this truly unique to this lot? And if it applies to other lots, does it merit changing the ordinance? Three, A, a written application for a variance is submitted demonstrating that special conditions and circumstances exist, which are peculiar. I have a hard time with that word, to the land structure or building involved and which are not applicable to other land structures or buildings in the same district. Part B, the literal interpretation of the provisions of this ordinance would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district under the terms of this ordinance. And C, the special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. Part D, the granting of the variance requested will not confer on the applicant any special privilege that is denied by this ordinance to other land structures or buildings in the same district. E, no non-conforming use of neighboring land structures or buildings in the same district. And no permitted or non-conforming use of land structures or buildings in other districts shall be considered grounds for the issuance of a variance. F was the notifications, uh, which were done. G is the public hearing, which is, is being held right now. Um, and then H, the planning commission shall make their findings. I'm not gonna read all of that. I is in recommending approval of any variance, the planning commission may prescribe appropriate conditions and safeguards. And J, under no circumstances shall the planning commission recommend granting a variance to allow a use not permissible under the terms of this ordinance. So section one is really what's gonna outline whether this merits um, a variance. In my, in my opinion of this, it is not.
And I guess I would agree with that, in my opinion. Um, it's pretty much the same topography across all the lots in the area. Um, we haven't seen any variance requests for any of that. Everybody else has just done what they had to do to conform. And then, I guess the biggest thing to me is, if you're gonna scoot it up there, you're gonna block off the other lot potentially right next door, which that goes against the 1C. Detriment to the adjacent property. I guess. I would...
I have, I have a question. So I am a teacher, not a builder. Um, a 12-foot footing, is that a lot? I mean, is that deep? Is that like, I mean, I don't, I don't know what the hardship is there. You know, that's, I mean, that's what I'm wondering is when you say, you know, when you, Sherry, when you're talking about 12-foot. Cause that's right, 12-foot, right footing. Okay, what? Cause that's right, twelve-foot, right, footing? Okay, what? Is that? Hard to do?
Well, I, I can answer that. You know, I come from a unique perspective in the background. Yeah, anytime you build on a, on a hill or a slope, you're having to create a retaining wall, which is different than a basement wall, which. The wall and the footing are designed radically different. And so my thoughts on this is, is they knew they were on a hill. And they would have to build accordingly, which requires a entirely different foundation design. To fit on a hill and you're not sitting on a level piece of ground, which would require just a, a basic twenty-four inch footing. With an eight or nine-foot wall. This is a different situation.
And then the lot that. Chris was talking about next, next to it, is that a flat? Is that flat? I mean, is it, or is it hilled? I mean, would they, would, would potentially that lot next to it use that corner? Because this lot is at the end of Catherine Way, right? Or Catherine, right? So they are the last one. So is the lot next to it, would it, I mean, would it use that Catherine Way as a access point? Because to me, it looks like it would be, what is it called? Starboard? But that all depends on the topography of that lot.
Well, it depends if the person wants to be on top of the hill or down.
Right, I don't know what the, yeah, cause if that, you know. Slopes too.
The other lot could be about a twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five foot rise from where they would build that, to get up to the driveway, up to Catherine Way. It would probably go off the starboard.
Okay.
I guess based on our ordinance and checklist that we have to go through, I wouldn't. Be in favor of recommending approval of this variance. One potential solution that I see. Is if you. Were able to purchase an additional like fifteen feet off of that. Right-of-way Catherine Way, that's according to Beacon owned by the Kabeizmans. If you purchase an extra fifteen feet along that, approximately fifty-five feet by fifteen. Then that would eliminate the variance need because your lot would then allow you to have that thirty-foot setback. But the way that our ordinance is written, I don't think that I could recommend approval of this, the way it is.
And Chris, I, I concur with you. There are other alternatives. You know, you can redesign the house, you can reorientate the house. Of course, you can come up with an alternative foundation design. I think there are a number of different options you can employ to. Get something to fit on the south side.
Are you ready for a motion?
I'd entertain a motion.
I would move to deny the application for variance based on findings of fact as stated in the discussion.
All right, I have a motion by Loest. Do you have a second or any other discussion?
I'll second that motion.
Yeah, Clark.
Oh, go ahead, Dan.
All right, I have a second by Clark. Roll call vote when you're ready.
Barkle.
Yes.
Loest.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Clark.
Yeah.
All right, motion carried. All right. Next agenda item is the public hearing for the definitions. Article five through article eleven, or article twelve and the newly proposed article twenty-nine. This is the new solar ordinance. And Bill, did you wanna go through any of this?
I think it's just all the changes we made at the last meeting. We eliminated some of the definitions. Do you want me to go through each one or?
I don't think we need to.
Basically.
Go ahead.
We have five through twelve articles. And we basically just ordered to enter the SCCS Solar Energy Conversion System into all of those. As a conditional use permit. Except for an egg.
I guess I have one question on the definitions. The definition for the Solar Energy Conversion System. I thought we discussed before eliminating the below fifty, above fifty. Where conditional use and permitted use and all that is. I thought we were going to eliminate that and it was just gonna be that first sentence.
We can do that if you'd like.
I'm open to that.
I guess we don't do that in any other.
No, we don't.
Any other definition.
So I said in all the articles, under fifty kilowatt Solar Energy Conversion System is permitted use. Above that is a conditional use.
So then when we get to section, or article twenty-nine. Now, this is rearranged a little bit from the last one that we had here at this meeting, right?
Yep.
Yes.
What I was wondering is the part that talks about agreements and studies. After the setbacks. If there could be a paragraph put in there, just like, cause that's gonna be part of the conditional use permit, right? All these have to be, right, submitted? So could we put a paragraph right underneath agreements and studies that says to the effect like it does in the conditional, you know, the filing information shall be submitted. For the consideration, just to make it clear that all these agreements and studies will be part of. Will be included in the conditional use permit so that we can see it.
Scroll down to the conditional use at the end and see what that says.
Yeah, that's what I was.
So those are requirements and if you look at E. Let's see, you've got your soil erosion sediment control. E is federal aviation. You've got your inventory of the species. Keep scrolling down a little bit, Bill. You've got a signed roadway agreement and G, which is there, your purchase power agreement. All of those are listed as being required for the application.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
So it is there.
Okay, yep. I just wanna make sure that that is made clear.
Yep, understood.
Another thing too is consideration of historical sites. We have wetlands, we have, you know, native, you know, endangered species. Yankton being Yankton and the fact that it is, you know, has a lot of historical, do we need to put something in there about its location to any historical? Again, thinking about the church at Mission Hill, which is, yeah, it's Wagon Church. You know, we have historical sites in Yankton. Do we want solar farms? You know, near them? So just a consideration or thing that popped up in my radar as I was going through this, this week.
Where are you talking about putting that in?
Um, you know, if you wanna do agreement studies, reports, plans, you know, or, you know, somewhere like that. Where, you know, they have to do an endangered species, wetlands, inventory. You know, the decommissioning, they have to have that included. So it would just be another thing that they have to look into to make sure that there's nothing, you know, that we know. That if this solar farm, wherever it's located at, that we are aware of any sites or historical sites or anything like that, you know. In proximity. Cause didn't, did we have cemeteries in there once or something? Wasn't there cemeteries or, yeah, I don't know, but. Just a thought. Just see if you thought that was necessary.
I believe the cemeteries used to be part of the setback chart, wasn't it?
I don't, geez, I just don't recall that.
Yeah, and I, I thought there was something about historical sites, but I could be wrong. I, that was probably the summer when we had our study.
I'm okay without it.
Yep, I mean.
No, we don't, I don't think it's anywhere else in the ordinance.
Were we talking about the facility setback requirements?
No, what I'm talking about is just that there is a study done to make sure that we, as a, you know, planning and zoning, that we are aware of any historical sites or anything. Important to the history of Yankton County that is not being, you know, infringed upon or taken away from, you know, by. You know, how many acres of solar panels.
Okay.
So I guess you'd be talking about adding it under the agreements and studies and adding like an E to that and putting historical sites.
Does that become an issue then? Do you have to add that into definitions where a historical site is described as?
Yeah, most likely.
How, how far back, how recent?
Yeah, I mean.
So. So I would support, Chris's change for sure, but I, again, I'm, I don't think it's, it's necessary in this. I think we've actually done a really good job of laying it out. I think the, adding the headers in there that, that we discussed at the last meeting really helped to clear things, the flow. And made it very clear what a CUP requires. So I think it, I think it looks good.
And last thing that I wanna bring up is the fact that a friend of mine from Kansas, they're dealing with this down there. Sent me some pictures of a solar farm and the glare from them, from, from different vantage points. And so she was suggesting that there should be by the company, like a sole, a glare analysis or a solar glare analysis to show. The planning and zoning, what it would look like from the roads, you know, from, you know, adjacent properties, especially farmhouses. Things like that. These pictures were pretty, wow, yeah, it's pretty bright.
Yeah, they can model all that stuff up.
Yeah, I would.
And there are different, different few points of, of different directions of what it, the proposed might look like, yes.
Yeah, I just think that's important for us as planning and zoning to know, you know, what this is, you know, if you have how many acres of solar panels, you know, glowing in the sun. You know, what is that, what is that gonna look like? Because we can have pictures of where the solar panels go and everything, but we don't really know. That's the, you know, what it's, you know, what is it gonna look like? What's the glare going to be? So. Yeah, she just said solar glare analysis. So I'm not sure what that means, but. I'm assuming what that means is just taking a look, a look at, you know, the light that comes off of it, the reflection.
So scroll down. Keep going, I think those are all setbacks. Studies, so would we consider that a study?
Yeah, that's what I would consider it.
So right there, we, our last one, we've got our power purchase agreement, so we could do an E. And have a solar glare analysis conducted on all residences within one mile of the project? Cause I think you need to give a distance. You don't wanna do the whole county.
Well, glare thing would be also to do with any roadways for safety, but. And this was one of the things that was brought up during the. Our task force earlier, and I'm not quite sure why. We took this out or if it was just overlooked because we were talking about the glare and then, I guess.
And we might have done that because didn't someone say that the panels they make today are not like the glaring panels they made before? Did, am I recalling that correctly?
Overlooked it, but I mean, just because some aren't like that doesn't mean that ones proposed to use would.
It would be nice if, and then they could just say in the report that these are non-whatever reflective. You know, it's better to be safe than sorry and say, wow, that's really bright.
Right.
And then also too, to make sure that, especially, you know, this time of year, it's, the sun is at a different angle this time of year than it is in the summertime. To make sure that, that analysis is done and it's done to show different times of the year.
So I would say like a solar glare analysis on any adjacent roadways or residences. I don't know what. What distance you would put on that. Definitely a roadway, anything that's adjacent to it, but.
If it creates a hazard, you know, for driving or traffic on it, you know, depending upon course of location, but. And, you know, the point that Lauren made was time of the year because this, like now, when the sun is getting down and the effects of where that. Reflection goes is different than it is from the middle of the summer. You know, we talk about it when we talk to people, you know, people building a project and about their downcast lighting. And so it doesn't glare out into the road or doesn't create a nuisance. To the people surrounding that also.
Yeah, this would only be more in conformance with what we currently got on every other district.
So I was looking for language to steal, cause that's always where you start. And Cottington has a requirement where they list like fencing and stuff. They say glare. All solar energy systems shall minimize glare from affecting adjacent or nearby properties. Measures to minimize glare include selective placement of the system, screening on the north side of the solar array. Modifying the orientation of the system, reducing use of the reflector system or other remedies that limit glare. So in their ordinance, they're just, they're recognizing there is glare and they're asking. For consideration, but they're not requiring a study. So that's probably not the exact language we want, but it gives you an idea. That was in Cottington. The Lynn County one, which is a good one. I didn't see it anywhere in the Lynn County one that we were borrowing from.
Some of them probably thought about setback, they knew how far their setback.
Yeah.
They thought their setback was great enough, you wouldn't have to worry about it.
That could be eerie.
Which in ours, a quarter mile setback from the nearest house. I mean, it is a long ways. I don't know what the glare would be. I guess my main concern would be roadways next to it because that could be a hundred-foot setback.
Chris, are you looking at the facility setback chart?
Yes.
The thirteen, twenty, and the hundred for right-of-way?
Yep.
Yep, I follow you.
So would we prefer to list glare under the first section where we address the fences and such? As Cottington County did? And then during the course of the discussion, or do you wanna just put it under a study and say, well, study it?
I think I'd rather have it under the study so that they actually present it and say, this is what it's gonna be, different times of the year or whatever.
Okay, so just. Okay, so just need some language there.
Basically add a E.
Okay. So do we need to bring that back to the planning commission next month, so we can review that? Or is that something that Gary and Bill can put together and everybody would be okay that it's gonna be in there?
We can just send it back out.
Get some feedback?
Show you the wording and.
And if we have concerns, okay, I'm good with that.
So we'd have to prove this one with the amended.
With amendment of adding.
So far, two amendments, correct? The definition and this one. Great.
Okay, and then I did, when I was reading it earlier on my phone in the tractor, I did find a typo or something that wasn't clear, but I'm having a hard time finding it back now.
Do you remember what it was about?
It was just a wording, I think it was towards the beginning of Article twenty-nine, but I'm having a hard time finding it now.
Wouldn't your glare language basically go in that section right there? Because you're talking about the lighting, all, all hazards are all issues dealing with the sighting of it.
You know, and I think the discussion was if we were just going to outline that you had to consider it, then it would go there, but I think they're asking for a study, so the net, the heading we were talking about says studies. So it would be a study is kind of like an aviation, excuse me, study. And like, what's the other study in there? The wetland study. I don't think I have it printed.
So that's something that would be a conditional or a condition on the permit.
Correct, we need to add it under the CUP, so it would, so scroll down to that. Conditional, it'll be toward the bottom then, so, see, we've got our inventory of the endangered wetlands, the power purchase decommissioning, all of that.
I'd say it'd go between I and J. Or between H and I.
Or whichever one above it was below, somewhere in there we need to put the glare study. I know it's after the roadway one. So in there somewhere, we need to just say the, what do we call it, a solar glare analysis or something. Good catch, Kathy.
All right, any other things to add from the board? If not, I'd open up to public comment on the proposed ordinance changes. Anybody wish to make public comment? Want to come on up to the podium and state your name?
Hi, I'm Cindy Kona Passick. From one eight one Heritage Drive, and I just, I had just printed off an article on November eleventh from the Dakota Scout. And just stating how, you know, encouraging the passing of this ordinance. Walworth County Commission was presented recently with a thirty-two hundred acre solar farm south of Mowbridge by Doral Renewables LLC. And that, interesting there, they have a mile setback from dwellings and a thousand foot setback. But I think the neighbors, the people there is the Ohi, the, the Ohi Solar Project, Ohi, that's what I was trying to say, has brought with it an outcry of opposition from area residents and farmers who contend the company hasn't been transparent about its plans and neighbors while voicing safety concerns. And I just thought it might be interesting to note that the representative for the Doral Renewables is Dan Liederman, and he's also associated with the Summit Carbon Pipeline Solution. So I think that would be a good incentive to have this one, this ordinance that you guys have been working diligently on. And so, thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else wish to speak on this topic? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Any other board discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Are we at a point where we can actually provide a motion before they change, make the changes in the next meeting or?
We can approve with changes.
With changes, okay.
Yep, and if for some reason they're not exactly right, we can always show up at the county commission meeting and voice our concerns, but Gary said he'd give us the wording to make sure. So I would move approval of the proposed changes to the ordinance, including the amendments to the definition of solar energy conversion system and the addition of the solar glare analysis to the study listing and the inclusion in the public or the, the CUP application list. Second?
All right, I have a motion by Los, second by Nelson. Go ahead and roll call vote when you're ready, Bill.
Barkle.
Yes.
Lost.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
All right, motion carried. So that brings us back to our plats. And I believe we were on the Cobley Plant?
Yes. So this is out along Beaver Beach Road. They purchased a few extra lots, so there were actually six different lots along here, each one of them was non-conforming. They took these three and combined them to make one conforming lot. These three combined to make a second conforming lot. So it cleans up that area quite a bit.
Motion to approve.
Second, Lost.
All right, roll call vote when you're ready, Bill.
Barkle.
Yes.
Lost.
Yes.
Kettering.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Weiss.
Yes.
Clark.
Yes.
All right, Dumont Holdings preliminary plat?
I'll show you the area that it's gonna be in. Went too far. Thirteen? Let's do this.
It's in section thirteen.
So it is this, this parcel, just this piece of it, basically. Is what they're planning, proposing now. So you have their preliminary plat, and then you have their grading and drainage plan along with that.
So they're just breaking up one big lot into a bunch of little ones?
Well, part, part of one big lot, this parcel goes all the way down here, and they're just cutting off a little piece here.
So the access is?
The section line road.
Which is not developed yet?
Yes.
It is developed.
Yes. It went from here and took it all the way across.
Okay.
That's where, right here.
And that's a private road?
No, it's county road.
That's a county road.
If anybody wants to, and I'm sure he'll probably have to extend it if he wants to do more of his development. He also owns this parcel and this parcel. So I'm, I'm assuming they're gonna have to take it all the way across to have access to these two.
Which road is it a continuation of?
It's not a continuation, this is already established road. This was just a section line that was fenced in trees and they opened it up and developed it.
So they opened it up, and who's responsible for it though?
They are.
That's what I mean, it's technically not a, on the county road plan or township level.
No, but it is a public road, it can be accessed, yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, so they're responsible for all their own roads, development and servicing.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Turn off the zone. Kind of curves up, yeah.
Whoever buys lot number two's got a tiny access point. Twenty-two feet. Or twenty-seven, twenty-two, that's twenty-two feet.
Going up in the corner way at the top of there, that was something I was wondering about from our variance conversation that we had earlier about access and laying, I know that the topography of that property, all of that property out there is really tough, but we gotta, you know, when you start getting a, an entrance into the property that narrow, then that's gonna be your front yard. And then buildable area on the lot itself.
Which, I mean, just seeing the whole area there in a plat layout like this, just, my mind reinforces the need why we can't just give a variance for any reason, cause otherwise you get an area like this and then pretty much everything's just gonna get built wherever, because.
Yep.
Well, and that's.
You're not gonna follow the rules for the one, then.
My thought was, was the, at some point, there needs to be a discussion about how the lots are laid out in those areas, you know, you might have to sacrifice two lots there for one or change the thing so that you have a minimum furniture on the property to access it. But that's a later discussion right now.
You wanna scroll down so we can just see the bottom?
Sure.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I think there is somebody here that would like, would like to make a public comment about the plat.
All right, if there's public comment, come on up.
My name is Phil Goan.
You wanna come up to the microphone for us, please?
I can't believe I'm bashful at this point, I've been a member of your community over fifty years, probably known all four generations of many of your families, but I feel, I feel, first of all, I owe all of you a big thank you. I mean, who would take on a project like this? And secondly, how do you do that without going and seeing, physically observing, you know, what's entailed there? Now, in our case, my bride of fifty-five years and I have lived over fifty years immediately to the east of Mr. Schenck's development here. We bought it from Ed and Jean English. The Englishes owned it longer than the Hatcheskes did. The Hatcheskes were the sellers in this case to Carl Schenck. Carl and I, I've known him since he was knee high, we've had some rather frank conversations about this. But the whole issue, and we're his representative here tonight, I would ask them, when he look, when you look on your plat outline, he talks about the sixteenth line. The sixteenth line is a long established fence line that was on the property when the Englishes bought it. It remains. We had quarter horses and calves on the place, we, we sit on about twenty acres roughly. And, you know, you get, you get possessive of what you can see and, and I can understand that, but we've come to terms with it and we know that we're not selling this place, it's gonna become a generational place for our, our son and his family and our grandsons, and so we truly care. The other concerns are, can I walk up there?
Sure.
Where am I at, Bill? Okay, here's my residence, okay, we can go with that. You know, I, I go basically north and, and it's this line is what I'm continuing with. Can you take it higher? I agree there, all right. But what this, what the action has been from the time they brought their, their surveyors out was to have a point sixty-six feet access into this development, which makes sense. Yeah. I think to myself, from a medical side, Eddie and I have endured many really intense weather conditions. I think we were the first ones in English rights to ever have a four-wheel drive vehicle. You know, we, we had a come and go on a lot of the bad weathers and we did it. But in this case, this development is gonna depend on, what do they call it, Bill, is, is that thirteenth street or?
Um, not sure.
Whatever, it, it's over here to that street, I think it's like fourteen hundred quid eleven?
Three hundred eleventh on the, on the north end?
Yeah, let's go back to that.
The plat?
Yep.
Yeah, the plat, yeah. He, he, he comes in, he's already took me for six hundred feet times thirty-three by opening up the section line, but Abraham Lincoln said it was supposed to be that way, so I'm not gonna argue with him. But the only view you people have, and I'm speaking as a person that's been blessed living on a high, high point out there, but this one, this one and this one, you can see water and look down. The rest of it, you'll see all the trash from, this was almost a dog hair stand of cedar trees and Charlie Johnson got it packed down to the low spots. And when I drive through and look at these lots, I just. Charlie Johnson got it packed down into the low spots, and and when I drive through and look at these lots, I just, I can't imagine it. But the real kicker comes here. What is the uh, where is this line? And there's a twenty-four-foot contingent, intended area there, which we have already started an adverse possession action on it. Today I hired Stockwell Engineering, and I'm using Davenport Evans as my legal counsel, and you know, adverse possession, if you go into twenty years and no one's protested, it's yours. We've gone to fifty years, we've improved the fence, we've got structure right up to within about ten feet of that line, and and I guess the biggest part is, uh, I don't want people buying lots in that section being disillusioned later when the dons aren't interested in giving them an access to to the street. Uh, the other party that is in this is the Housumer Shrine, and they they will not part with property or an easement, because then they lose control of the property and it reverts back to the diocese of Sioux Falls. The other thing is, we have a number of families out there, young kids. Those roads out there are not built for any kind of significant traffic. And so we've got traffic, we've got the fact that I'm bringing a civil suit against them, and we've got winter coming on. I would ask that you consider not taking an action on this. Let my act, let my uh suit uh proceed, and uh and then Carl's gonna have to come back and modify the width of four of those lots. Because he's counting on twenty-four feet, he's not gonna have it. And if you're somebody who's having a medical crisis and you're way down here on lot fourteen, you can't jump across the fence and get on the road, because there's barriers and fences. You've gotta find your way through these lows and highs and ins and outs and up to the top, and then back to whatever this is, two seventy-four, and then finally back down to Highway fifty-two. And so I feel bad for him that his due diligence didn't become sharp enough, and and I feel his engineering uh community is glad to lay these things out, but in all practicality, Emmy and I are homesteaders of fifty years in that community, and it's gonna be a tough one for anyone who buys in that development.
Questions?
The twenty-four feet you're talking about, so that red line kinda rep represents essentially the the edge of your property, correct?
Right.
Right there, 'cause there's your.
This is your.
Yeah.
That's my home, that's my carriage shed, buggy shed.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So how does how does the twenty-four feet you're talking about on this plat, is he plating over that red line onto your property?
I believe he is. I came home yesterday. We we also live in Sioux Falls, back and forth, and here is a stake, it bomed right through my heart. But he's he's got it, you know, twenty-four feet in to the east of of the old established line.
Of the fence line?
Yes, and and they've got a surveyor's medal in the ground there also, and you know, it 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 just, it he's he's never going to have access for the southern part of his development from the southeast, never. That property is in the trust for the kids and that, you know, we got one that wants to be a medical doctor in Yankton at some point. They'll be dons here a long time. And and we're, you know, we're thinking ahead, but I'm also thinking to the people, I mean, you know, if we didn't know the rigors of of what we were going to have to put up with when we first moved out there in nineteen seventy-two, we probably would've thought a little more too. And here, the house was built, the driveway was done, you know, uh, then he he uh, there's no water plan yet for the place. Uh, that has to be engineered and laid out, so I I, Carl, we're here tonight, I say, Carl, what's your time plan on it? Do you have a five-year plan on it? What is it, you know? But in the meantime, you know, we're gonna nail down our twenty-four feet, so there's no contest in that, and uh and then let them know that I uh I don't wanna say I wish him luck, I wanna say I I feel bad for those who are gonna buy in for that location.
Thank you.
Thank you. I should add, I would imagine that the survey will be done in two weeks, that's when I'm doing this, missing on the adverse possession thing, and that's still, I don't understand that. I don't see him. There wouldn't be any duress, just putting out this thing on hold until, you know, that matter, yeah, gets solved, and maybe a few other questions. Yeah, sure. He's so, he's so far away for the people to get out of there in poor weather conditions, and they have to travel in order to use screws. Actually, one part of the roof's got a spring in it, I went through there recently, and it's gonna suck heat in, right, to get out of there, so, you know, they uh, they've got their hands full.
So I guess, is there any other public comment on this plat? All right, seeing none of closed public comment, um, I guess just reading in the ordinance a little bit. I mean, I don't know if our ordinance gives us the authority to approve or deny plats just because we think that the access is not adequate or whatever, it is establishing a right-of-way, and I guess on the map, on paper, it looks like there's access. Um, the one part that I do find issue with a little bit is um section twenty-eight twenty, where basically we're requiring that they give us the plat and the boundary lines and everything, but if those boundary lines are in contention in a legal process, how can we approve a plat with those lines?
I guess a question on that also, and Gary, maybe you can, um, you know, in the agricultural world, when a fence has been in over seven years, that's the line. And does that carry over as far, other than that concept? Does that a change of like, you know, what Phil was talking about was the sixteenth line and, you know, the different lots that are, you know, and that's that's government lines, but if, even though that line is there, does it, you know, we've, I've been involved in the thing where the the fence was not in the right place, but it'd been there forever. And then they came and they had an engineer come and drive stakes through the field, saying that, well, this is their land, they wanna move the fence back. And that don't happen.
And that's what's tough, you know, we've been told in the past that it's pretty hard to deny plats on a civil issue.
I agree. I I don't think we can, you know, that that's kind of the issue that comes down to him against him. Are gonna have to decide if the if he's encroaching on his property or whatever, but the plat, basically, the plat's coming to us to be approved as he laid it out.
What I'm saying is if we don't know where the actual boundary line is established, how can we approve it?
Can can we not take action? Can we delay?
You can table it.
Just table it till the next meeting, and then we may know more then. They aren't gonna be building anything out there in the next month. One, it's gonna be December Christmas time.
So you'd have to do is make a motion to table it for a month?
Yeah, and I guess the other thing that I would be concerned about with the boundary line, if it turned out that um Phil was right and they're encroaching or whatever, and those boundary lines then moved and we replanted or whatever it would happen then, would those lots then be non-conforming, losing that that space?
Yeah, supposedly some of them are already sold, so.
Some of them are close to an acre.
On the plat.
I mean, if you go back to that plat there, the ones that are on the border, I guess they're all over, quite a bit over an acre, so they probably wouldn't bother as far as being a conforming lot, but I guess I would be in favor of tabling until we know more, because if the boundary line is going to change, it doesn't make sense to. We don't know what the boundary line is.
You know, or at least um to hear the other side's version.
Right.
You know, Mr. Schenck should have a a chance to say his side of the story.
Could I add one comment?
Sure.
Mr. Schenck was was very upfront and even with me, or first named the uh surveyors were there, and I said, Carl, here's how it is. And he went back and told Charlie Johnson, his operator. Charlie told him, he said, Phil, Carl said, do not touch that fence. So he's been aware of that from the time he started, and he's honored that. He's not transgressed on me at all, and and it's just the fact that this is an issue Emmy and I have to solve for our grandparents.
I'd entertain a motion on this plat.
I make a motion to table.
Second.
All right, I have a motion to table it till next meeting. Second, we can vote when you're ready.
Barkle?
Yes.
Loost?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
I'm sorry, what was that? I'm sorry, Dennis, what did you say?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Okay. Nelson?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Clark?
Yeah.
So the next plat is actually a final plat of several of those lots. One, two, three, five, and seven.
So it's the same, same issue.
One, two, five, and seven, you said?
One, two, three, five, and seven. But if the preliminary hasn't been approved, can can you approve the final?
One, two, three, seven.
No, especially since. One would be.
Seven and eight, I'm sorry.
One and eight would be part of the contested pieces.
So it's the the top three here and then the two below them here, these five?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
This plat, is it, is this uh, somebody taking a section of lands and it's not uh developed? But they're going to be developing, is that?
Right.
All this is?
It's it's this piece of property, and they started on this, this part of this end of it right here. That's what the plat is.
So somebody's just wanted to take their land and?
Break it up into smaller chunks and.
That somebody could possibly move in?
Right.
And that would mean they're gonna put roads and access and all that stuff, right?
Yep. I guess since we tabled the preliminary, I'd be in favor of tabling the final as well.
Is that a motion?
I suppose it'd be a motion.
I'll second that.
All right, we can vote when you're ready.
Barkle?
Yes.
Loost?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Clark?
Yeah.
All right, motion carried. Onto the spady plat of.
This one's pretty simple. That's not for voting. Fifty-two is right here. Deborah Bullard is their private road. They own this large, there are actually two parcels here, they're combining them into one.
For their future plans, it works out better to have them one complete lot.
They currently own both lots and they're just putting them together?
Yes, yeah, just combining them.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we can vote when you're ready.
Barkle?
Yes.
Loost?
Yes.
Kettering?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Clark?
Yeah.
All right, we are on to the Article twenty-six discussion. Article twenty-six is the wind energy conversion systems, looking at redoing that. Now, did we, I guess we can appoint any kind of task force? Was that brought up, the county commission or anything? Not yet?
But I don't know if everybody's looked at it, having anything that that are glaring that they they might have changed.
Well, a lot of the legal stuff in there. All the. Definitions, no? No. The decommissioning, um.
Liability.
Liability, all that stuff. Uh, some of that, couldn't you just continue on from the solar?
Borrow it.
Yeah, I think we could borrow.
It's basically the same, most of it.
I think we could borrow ninety percent of it and just update the different definitions and setbacks and that kind of thing to make it more applicable to wind.
You know, I think um in here, they they talk about rooftop, um, anything essentially under, was it a hundred? Kilowatts. Anything over, they called commercial. Anything under was small wind energy. Um, and they talked about the height on roofs and where that's permitted. Um, so it is and they have, you know, the decibels, I guess I I think about all the the wind ones at the state level, and big things that always come up are the setbacks from residences, um, the noise, the flicker, which I don't think there's any flicker in here that I recall reading. Um, and then the uh decommissioning is a big one. The roads are huge, because they are a lot more than solar panels to get the same energy and such. So those are the the big things. Some of it's covered in here, some is not, some is probably not covered enough um on that. So I felt that the that the task force really worked well, because again, whatever we decide, the commissioners might not be on board with, so I I am a proponent of doing that again. Certainly, we've got something already in print, so it's not as critical as the solar was. So I think over the next couple months, and again, we could choose to meet once a week again to hammer it out, and it's it's not um harvest season and it's January-type things, so maybe our our timeframe would be easy to attain there, so. But if there's, if there are major things here that folk. So, but if there's, if there are major things here that folks see, Kathy pointed out the legal stuff, which I agree with. I think we need to align it with what we just did with solar to be consistent. But in here, we have a quarter mile setback, and so that's gonna be a contentious thing. We don't have any limits to the heights of these things. They're getting bigger and some, some counties are, are limiting how, the big, big ones and saying just the other ones can be in. The noise levels, I think we need to pay attention to. I don't know if anybody's ever pulled up to one of these wind farms and parked there. I, I live by the high voltage power lines that go through, and when I stand under there, man, I can hear the wind whipping through those things and they're not even turning. And, and I have pulled over and, and sat below wind turbines in Colorado. They're everywhere and stuff. So I do feel for, for folks who have to live right by them. Some people, it doesn't bother. Some people, it gives them a headache. So I think those things, we all need to think about and say, well, where is my guidance? Kind of like we did with the solar. We all had kind of a guidance. We ended up being somewhere here. What other things was in here? And I think the rooftop ones in residential, we need to, to talk about and see if we, we allow solar on rooftops up to the fifty KW. Are we going to allow these? Now, we have no height limitation on anything in this county. Some counties have, like in Ag, it's a, it's a thirty, it's a thirty foot, except for like silos and things like that. And in residences, some of them are twenty foot. So we have none of that. So the heights here are important if we're going to allow that. The definitions, I didn't search the ordinance. I didn't take the time to search each of them, but I can guarantee ya, that's the only place that, that you see that is right there. And then, like we did with the solar, we moved all of the definitions to the front and we made them easy to find because there is a definition for utility here and there is a definition for utility facility at the beginning of our ordinance and they are both different. And so that's confusing. And I think little things like that, our job is to clean up and try and, try and make it, simple is better, but to the point concise, if you will. So...
Well, for the foundations of the wind towers, for the rec, or restoration, it says you do to a depth of four feet. Is that enough?
That I would have to research, you know, when you had cemeteries that are six foot down. I mean, when you think of things buried, like when I was on the soccer board, we were looking at that area out by HSC that there must have been something there before because they said, don't dig. Because there were all kinds of, whether it's power lines or piping or foundations or whatever, under the surface. So is it a deal where the location, because if you're just gonna farm it afterwards, tile could go in? What else could you trench in a, in a field unless it's in the right of way where someone's trenching communications lines, telephones, gas lines, things like that, pipelines? So...
Or if it's somewhere that might potentially get developed, you're gonna have water lines or something like that.
Water lines, yep.
You don't necessarily want four feet something.
There has been instances too where, and they wouldn't probably see it now, but the telephone used to cut across fields to get to a residence instead of staying in the right of way, you know, back in the early days. And then, you know, and I don't know, you know, what depths you're talking about either, but, you know, some of this deep tillage stuff gets to be pretty deep too in some areas, you know, when, but the tiling and to cut through to get the water to flow, they'll get down fourteen feet or more sometimes, you know, to get the grade on that right. So all that's gonna make a difference.
But someone would argue with you when they dug the basement for my house, they were digging some boulders out that are naturally there too. So the argues, you could argue the other side and say, there's stuff down there that you're, you're not gonna know. You could find Sue the Tyrannosaurus Rex, was that what she was?
As long as it's not a fiber optic cable.
Yeah.
Then there is a difference.
So, you know, those things can, can be talked about and stuff.
I guess for our purposes tonight, I guess I would just wanna recommend to the county commission that they appoint a task force so we can get started. I don't know if it does us much good, meaning once a month, try and hammer this out, I guess we can.
No, I, I agree.
It elongates meetings and everything, and I like the way that the solar one worked. I think that we got a lot done in a short time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Probably January would be a better time to start.
I, I, I would personally, since we already have the wind, we have it, we have most of it here. I think as a, as a planning and zoning, we could tweak this out on our own. I would rather see the commission start in January with pipelines, with, with the carbon pipelines because that's from scratch. We have, you know, we have nothing in place for that one. And I, I agree with you, the task force, you know, I was against it at the beginning. You know, it, you know, starting from, when you're starting from scratch, it's nice to have the different perspectives. Was it Mike who was on that task force, Mike Welch?
Yep.
Yeah, I appreciated his insight on, on many things when you're starting from scratch. This we have. I mean, we, we, you know, I don't know how much, I mean, most of it's here. I would, you know, instead of, you know, pointing a task force from the, you know, the county, putting a task force for this, I would rather see them gearing up to create one for the pipe, for carbon, for the pipelines. Because, you know, December's December. We all know what goes on in December. Not much, you know, to, to get ready for January and start getting a task force ready for that. And because I, and Christie did a great job with the task force, I think the same way we did with the, for the solar is just taking, you know, you just, we just, not Chris, Ryan, when he took, did this, is just taking, you know, chunks for each meeting, you know, like next month, what would, what would we like to focus in on? Instead of having to sit here and try to do everything, you know what I mean? If we could just focus in for like the next two meetings or whatever, you know, what do we wanna focus on and what do we wanna tweak here and then, you know, go forward. Is Don there? He's our county commission commissioner.
Do you have any thoughts on that, Don?
I like, uh, I was at the county commission, that the task force do it on this as you did on the other because you did such a great job. I'd like to go a lot faster and get it to the public sooner.
I guess one of the main points Lauren was making was prioritizing doing like pipelines first rather than the, the wind turbines as a task force, since we already have a wind ordinance. That's not as pressing of a need as pipeline ordinance. So she was talking about starting with pipelines as a task force.
Very well. I get most of my issues, most people talk to me about things, talk about wind. They don't talk about pipelines. It looks to me like this, the carbon CO, is it carbon monoxide? Pipeline is, is pretty well tied up for a pretty good future. So I don't think anybody has to worry about that. I don't know if there's other pipelines coming in. A lot of people have been, approached us on wind energy.
Can you give a public comment?
Sure, we can take a public comment.
This is Cindy Kona Pasek, and I know that having been on some of the different groups that talk about the CO2 pipeline, that Summit Carbon Pipeline Solution is currently still working on going to the county commissions and offering them fifty thousand dollars. So they really aren't taking a break. They're still moving forward just from a different angle. And so, yeah, I just wanted to point that out just so Don knows that they, they aren't taking a break. And that, that would be Dan Liederman again is one of the, the main lobbyists for that company. Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, seeing none, a closed public comment.
I don't see our wind as being, we have something in place and it's just a matter of cleaning it up. We have nothing for pipelines. And if we get a task force together for wind, that just delays the pipeline into the spring. And then we get into summer and, you know, I just, like I said, we, we have our wind already, we have an ordinance here. It's just a matter of tweaking it, cleaning it up. Where, like I said, pipelines, we have nothing.
So, Don, at your next county commission meeting, could you have that discussion with your fellow commissioners and ask what priority they would like us to take? I think, I think either way, we could do a task force like we did last time, whether it would be to focus on wind first and then pipelines or pipelined and then wind.
Well, yes, I think the wind thing can be done in a month or two. And then the process of going through and reviewing and reviews can be done later. And you can already have started on the pipelines. We need to get both of them done for sure as soon as we can.
Okay. So if you could discuss that and then make your, your appointments or ask for your volunteers, by January, one of those could get going.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anything else anybody wants to add on Article twenty-six or...
So will this be on our agenda then for next month or, I mean, are we...
I guess it depends on what action the county commission takes, if they wanna appoint a task force or just have us, whether they want a task force for wind and then pipelines or vice versa, or if they just want us to work on it directly, one or the other, they can make that...
The last go around, we, we put it on the agenda, the task force met, and we came to the planning commission. The members that weren't on the, on the task force got to put their input in. So I think we should put it back on the agenda for next month, but let the task force do their job in the meantime.
Next month is December, so I guess there won't be anything happening with the task force, but we might know a direction. Yep, we can put it back on.
Because telecommunications is one that needs to be done eventually too.
Yeah, probably gonna put, I'd say cell towers is important too, but that's just me because there's all, there's, there is some things that, I mean, it still has the blue test in it and, and so...
Bill and Gary, would you, would you, or the next, I guess on the next adjournment, in the meantime, give some thought on, on who we should ask for the task force from each of them?
Sure.
So get both task forces identified and we can get them started in early in the year.
Yeah, I actually won't be at that meeting, but Bill will be, but I can get it on the agenda.
Okay, that, that'll work fine.
And as far as the cell towers, we ran into the issue, the last one, if I recall right, that basically they said that they don't have to follow our ordinance because they have a federal mandate or whatever and...
Well, that's, I mean, there's a lot of things. That's why I mentioned that because it was, we still have where the consultant was needed and there was huge amounts of money that would be paid. And there's a lot of issues with that one also.
Yep.
Good.
Okay.
Well, if everybody's good with the Article twenty-six discussion, we can move on. Any final public comment? Seeing none, a closed public comment. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Loost?
Second, Michael.
All in favor, say aye.
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 opposed. All right, we are adjourned.
Have a good night, Don.
Thank you.
Have a good night, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
I was gonna say, you about forgot it last time. That was a new one.
Yeah.
I wish I had a picture of that. Send that to your wife.
She's, she's great.
Oh my gosh, that's funny.
We've, we've been there.
Every, yes, yes.
All of us have been there. Oh, that's funny. Well, as long as everybody is healthy.
Oh, yeah.
The screaming and stuff.
She's gotta set it alongs. It's good. Starting to, getting there.
And if you have a second one, be totally different than the first one, I'll tell you that.
And then the third one, you think you got it all in control? It's like, no.
No, they're all different.
Yes, they are. Thank goodness they are.